Good evening, everyone. I call to order the special meeting, it's a joint meeting of the River Falls Council and the School Board. The meeting has been properly notified and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome to the people from the city of River Falls. We are very pleased that you accepted our invitation to come and join us for now what has become an annual meeting. From the School Board side, we appreciate the chance to have shared discussion. After all, we are the elected officials, local elected officials for the city, seeking to serve our community, and it's a very good thing for us to have shared conversation. So, we're going to follow the agenda tonight. After each one of the presentations, then I will stop and ask if there would be any discussion, questions, or comments. So, with that, we should start with introductions to make sure if we all know each other, and Alyssa, I'm wondering if you would start.
Sure.
I tried to catch you when you weren't eating.
Thank you. Alyssa Miller, I am the alderperson for District Three in River Falls, and I have three children in the school district, two at Greenwood and one at Meyer. So, thank you so much to all the teachers there for putting up with my kids.
I'm Jeff Bjork, lifetime resident of River Falls, always a Wildcat, and I'm an alderman at large.
I'm Diana Dean, I'm another alderperson at large, and I had two daughters who went K through 12 in River Falls School District and loved it.
I'm Scott Morset, I'm alderperson at large, three kids that went through the district now graduated and on career paths, and a wife who works at Greenwood is a paraprofessional.
Good evening, I'm Scott Simpson, the city administrator. There's four Simpson kids, a couple that have made it through the district, and my wife is a three and four K teacher.
I'm Bjork, alderperson, District Four, and I don't have any kids at school. I just have grandkids.
Grandkids.
Four grand.
Dan Poland, mayor in town here. He put five kids through the school district. They turned out okay, you guys did a good job.
I'm Stacy Myers, and I currently serve as the president of the School Board. I have three children who are graduates of this school district. I'm not from River Falls, but I definitely feel like it's home when I've been welcomed.
I'm David Bell, I'm the district administrator since July 1st, but I have lived in River Falls and worked at River Falls School District since 2017, just right down the road. I have one graduate and two high schoolers, ninth and 11th grade, right now.
My name is Mike Miller, I'm the School Board treasurer, lifelong president, almost 10 years off, but for most of my life I've been here, have three kids that have gone through the district and graduated. I am also a proud Wildcat graduate.
My name is Alan, I'm Tecton Hagan, lived in River Falls for almost 40 years, I guess, a long time, school district. I'm board vice president, I'm also a member of the Board of Directors for the Wisconsin School Board Association, just re-elected to another three year term last Wednesday, so I'll be doing that for a while. I have three boys, all went through the district and been on the board for 16 years.
I'm Lindsay Curtis, I am the current board clerk, and I've lived in River Falls with my family for, oh, nine, almost 10 years now. We have four kids, three at West Side, one at Meyer Middle.
I'm Allison Page, I've lived here all my life, I'm a graduate of River Falls High School. All five of our children graduated from River Falls High School, and we have four grandkids in the district now.
I'm Beau Herstein, I'm also a lifer of River Falls, graduated from River Falls High School, four kids that have gone through high school, and I've got one sophomore in high school.
I'm Monica LeWold, I've lived in River Falls for just over 12 years now. I am a former city employee, now works in a different city, and I have two kids who graduated from River Falls.
Well, thank you, everyone. There are a few other people who are guests of the school district that we will introduce when we get to that point in the agenda, but the first thing will be, the school district will start with our end update, so then we will turn to the city. So, the first one will be the district strategic plan, and David will lead us through that.
Well, you know, when we met to talk a little bit about what the agenda would be for today, we kind of wanted to spend his time on four big areas that are of importance to the district. And I met with Scott and I chatted with him, and I appreciate, even though this is my first time, that he made me go first. So, anyways, hopefully this aligns to what the district represented and provides some information to the city and all the representatives that are here. So, when we talk about our strategic plan, we start with what our mission and our values are. That was created and reinforced in 2022, so we're right in the middle of a five-year plan, and the mission is there, and it's to inspire all students through challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning experiences in a safe, collaborative environment. We aspire to matching those values in the decisions that we make at the board level, as administrators, and in the classroom. To get specific, we've got five goals that we're focusing on, and that's high expectations for student learning, a safe and welcoming environment, attracting and retaining our staff, providing life readiness skills, and a holding operational excellence. Move my clicker over there. I'll move on. So, the first piece that we wanted to do was take a little bit of time to celebrate 2324. We have a lot to be proud of in our district around academic growth. We have a school report card that exceeds expectations. We have a course offering sheet at the high school that includes 165 offerings, in which kids have an opportunity to earn transcript, transcribed credit through CVTC, a dual academic credit through UW River Falls, as well as lots of opportunities for industry-wide certifications. So, one key core area is the idea of our students graduating, career and college-ready in the field that is most important to them, and we're real proud of that. And then the other piece that is really a core to our academic growth is the concept of intervening. So, having systems in place, if students are struggling, or students are not struggling and exceeding expectations, how do we intervene? How do we support those kids to keep them challenged? And those areas are sources of pride within our district. We're also very proud of our students and the wide variety of full curriculum opportunities that they have, really in grades K through 12. I could take a long time to go through some of these highlights, but definitely something that our district is very proud of, and really ties right into the curriculum goals. There's tons of research there around attendance, there's tons of research around academic success. When students are engaged, they find their niche outside of the classroom, and we really feel passionate that that's something that's very, we see high levels of participation rates within those areas. We have a highly trained staff this past year. Like most school districts and most organizations, we are encountering a great deal of turnover, whether it's 10 retirees who are leaving with lots of years of experience, or it's welcoming in 68 new staff members across all of our different job groups, or even having 23 staff members in new roles. I think that's been a primary focus this year, is making sure that we stay focused on our strategic plan while introducing that large number of new staff. We'll talk about continuous growth in 2425. We've really zeroed in as a school board and as administrative team, and as a larger school community on a discipline planning process, in which we're really focusing on what's the most important elements of our strategic plan, and having lead members that are within our sphere of influence that we're having conversations about, whether it's conversations at the board level, or whether it's conversations as an admin team, or as a grade level, or a content area around what our goals are. And I'll kind of extend on that a little bit here. And then also keeping a compelling scorecard or scoreboard, not about flaming or shaming, but when we say we're about academic growth, we should have some data, we should be having some conversation about what that data is, and we should celebrate when that data is exciting, and we should zero in and not be afraid to have conversations about where that data is and lining up with where we want it to be. And so, we'll talk a little bit about how we're doing that. And that really folds into that last discipline, which is creating that cadence of accountability, regular, repeated, and predictive. So, whether it's the board having conversations about what our goals are, or whether it's our third grade team having conversations about how their students are doing, we're connected in a way that's very specific. So, what are our most wildly important goals? Well, it's not going to surprise you what they are. We're about academic growth, we're about student engagement, and we're about employee satisfaction. And so, when we set forth this year and we set our goals, they really are centered within those areas. So, our planning, our resource allocation, our in-service time, our data collection, it should really point to one of those three big areas. We think that if we stay focused on what we control and not get frustrated about things that are out of our control, we can be accountable to our student staff and then ultimately our school. So, one way that we are doing that through is introducing a strategic plan scorecard that we've talked about at our school board meetings pretty regularly. Essentially, this is an opportunity for us to monitor academic readiness benchmarks and make sure that we're aligned to the goals. I'm just going to spend a really quick piece there on those three. So, the first one is River Falls Learns, and that's really data points that point to where we are growing academically, where we can point to our investment in college and career readiness planning, and our strong and robust systems of support. And so, one aspect of that is at each level, K5, 6, 8, and 9, 12, our teams, our teachers and support staff are setting goals around academic growth that we will monitor at the board level and at the administrative level on a regular basis. In addition, we have some corresponding data points that we look at, so we have what we feel is most important, that's very close to the work that we're doing. And we also have corresponding data points that are maybe broader pictures of our academic achievement, and to kind of point and correlate if the things that we're looking at are truly enacting the change that we want. So, that's River Falls Learns. River Falls Works is really about creating a collaborative employment environment and culture that's focused on student learning and high-quality teaching practices. It's about mentoring and coaching support. It's about an environment in which we can offer regionally competitive salary and benefits, and creating a strong building culture. Consistency is critically important. We know, in the world that we live in, there's going to be some level of turnover for our teachers, for our support staff, but creating an environment where we're a school district in which attainment is strong and is a positive thing. So, the other piece of this then is the data points that we look at. So, whether it's retention, whether it's staff feedback surveys, whether it's our rankings within the district, or whether it's other project-based data points. Last piece is connection. So, the most important connection that we have is making sure our kids and our students feel connected within our school community. So, we're looking at things like absenteeism and participation rate in the core curriculums. We're also looking at connections for parents, so we're looking at feedback surveys, and we're also looking at connections with the greater River Falls community, whether that's college or technically college connections. So, we're looking at the percentage of students that are participating in those pieces. And then we want to be accessible to everyone, so looking at how does community education fit into that? How does our accessibility, how does our web presence and other things maintain accessibility? So, that's the connection piece. So, like I mentioned before, our board is really focused on rooting our conversations, having portions of our school board meetings focused on these things. There's other elements of our work, but this is critically important. So, that's just a really high-level, vast overview of our strategic plan. We're about halfway through it right now, and the steps we're taking to it.
Are there any questions or comments, especially, the board knows this, but especially from the city council person, clarifications?
David, when you talk about regional and second or third, what is regional? Is it western Wisconsin, all of Wisconsin, what is it?
Yes, so there's lots of different ways that you can slice it up. We've really zeroed in on regionally and demographically comparative districts. And so, regionally, we look at Hudson, Menominee, New Richmond, those are kind of our regional comparisons. You can get really big or really small, but those for us, for school district purposes, that's what we look at. And then we have, we also have what we call demographically similar districts. So, they're not close to us within a region, but they're about our same size, about our same free and reduced lunch, about our same, lots of other pieces. So, Pulaski, Westapere, Monona Grove, so those are communities within Wisconsin that have similar demographics. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, how about referendum projects?
Referendum projects. So, Lynette Coy, she's our Director of Finance and Facilities. She is a critical person along with Joel Hazelman in the execution of our referendum projects. Neither of them could be here tonight, so I'm in as the pinch hitter, so I will speak to these pieces, and obviously, we're very comfortable in these calls. So, first, as everyone here knows, we reported our referendum questions last February, an operational referendum and a bond facilities referendum. The operational referendum allows us to meet our ongoing operating needs, and then the facilities referendum allowed us to borrow $28 million to complete some projects within the school district. So, tonight's a lot more on the facilities side. So, the first piece there is a picture that's hard to see, but really what this delineates is about five separate projects within the $28 million project. So, we have a transportation and maintenance center, we have projects that are taking place here at the high school, as well as Meyer Middle School, Rocky Branch, and West Side Elementary. And the day the referendum passed until now, there's been a whole lot of work that has been taking place, but not terribly visible work that's taking place. That's the design developments, the development of the construction documents, and preparing for bidding. So, we're to the point now where the majority of the projects will be bid out this month, by the end of this month, and construction will begin in late winter, early spring of '25, with the bulk of the work taking place at each of the buildings happening over the summer of '25. It won't impact our school calendar. We worked with our architect, as well as our construction manager, to make sure that we can hold our normal school calendar and still feel confident that we can complete the projects in which the timeline that we need them to be completed. That means fall of '25 projects. It doesn't mean on September of '25 everything's going to be done, but it will be as close as possible to get the essential elements of what needs to get done and completed. The only caveat to that is Meyer Middle School, some of the HVAC work will take place over two summers, so there'll be some additional work that will take place in '26, summer of '26. The only thing that's really exciting and happening right now is we demolished our tennis courts. That work is, it was strategic to do that now. It allows us to get the initial work on the tennis courts done and completed before winter, allows a freeze-thaw cycle to take place before they put the actual tennis court stuff on top, and the tennis court piece then, that should eliminate the cracking that would go with it. So, that was a pretty big overhaul. We're excited to get through that piece, and it has been going very well. Picture what tennis courts will look like, very similar, so there's no like huge change in scope, there's nothing. It's just the replacement of those courts and adding the proper ground conditions to make sure that they last for a long time. We did add a viewing area in the middle between the courts. That's the only real big difference you'll see, is spectators can now sit in between the courts, watch the matches, as opposed to standing on the outside of the fence and having to watch. And no significant interruption to the footprints, in other words, we're not losing other elements of the back. The next piece that I wanted to highlight is our transportation center. So, there's three pictures here, the top pictures are wondering what that transportation center area would look like. It's made up of two big areas, two maintenance stalls for all of the work to take place on our buses, and then an area for offices, break room, and meeting room areas for both our transportation department and our maintenance department. And so, the other two pictures, the bottom left, highlights the district obtained a home that was on the sort of left-hand corner of that parcel of land, and that has now been removed, and that is the location where that transportation center will take place. And so, all right, just kind of shows where that piece will go. So, that's the design piece. This is one of the projects that we bid out here at the end of November, and then hopefully completed, it will be completed by fall. Here's an additional rendering split. The next piece is the high school multipurpose space, and so, there has been a lot of collaboration with the planning team and the athletic department on the use and layout of the multipurpose facility. The facility will include all of the elements that were described in the referendum process, in a design that we think meets the needs in a perfect manner. So, these are renderings of that building. It will be located off the back, if you're familiar with where the pool is, in the circle where you pick up your kids for pool, and lessons, swimming lessons. That's pool lessons. Waterfall or whatever. Yeah, right. This will kind of come out off of that area. There's those big, large pine trees. Those, that's the space that we're talking about. So, this is a rendering of the outside of it, and there's really two floors to that, so we moved to a two-floor, a half of the foot, so we need about two floors to obtain the goals of the project in the way that we wanted. So, this piece will come off of what was the existing weight room and speed and strength area, and it just shows a speed and strength PE space that can be used all year round, 12 months of the year. And then, so that will be the second floor, and then the first floor, which is, not a great picture of this, but it is also a multipurpose space that's a matted area, so it's where the wrestlers will utilize this space after school. It'll also be used during the school day for PE classes that would require this type of space. So, we're getting sort of that 12 months out of the year, two different space opportunities. So, we're excited about that. And then the other piece is a lot of work, not as many pictures that are terribly exciting about what's taking place at Meyer Middle School, Greenwood, Rocky Branch, and West Side. If I were to highlight the work there, it falls into some very large buckets around security, mechanical, electrical, plumbing infrastructure, as well as updating of bathroom areas within some spaces. We will continue to provide monthly updates, so I grabbed all of this from our referendum facilities project page that will update each month. I just wanted to highlight three things that we really appreciated working with the city. There's just elements when you're doing this work, whether it's combining parcels, or understanding how you vacate right away, or making sure that we're having proper permitting, and basically, any interaction that we've had with the city has been really positive and quick, which is obviously critically important. So, we really appreciate that partnership and the ability to act on those things when we're... That is my referendum update.
Are there any questions? Yes, Alyssa.
So, with the new housing that's being built, and I think we touched on this last year when we met, are the new schools, are the new designs to the schools creating any additional, no, class space? So, how close are we to capacity at elementary level?
Sure. We are, I don't have an exact answer. I can look up and follow. You feel very comfortable with what we did in 2018, that our elementary schools, our three traditionally-sized elementary schools in the public Montessori, we feel comfortable that those size estimates match our demographer study. So, there is a lot of housing going on, but our demographer study kind of showed not all of that housing is maybe yielding what we would think as far as the number of students that are going to be there. So, we wanted to be careful to make sure that it's not overbuilt, and we feel comfortable that the 2018 referendum at that space is what it is.
Are there other questions? All right, then we are going to move on to a school safety update, and for that one, I'm going to call on Dr. Nate Sherman, who actually serves as our Director of Personnel and Leadership Development. He has extensive research with school safety and working with our district zones. He's the right person to do it.
Thanks, good evening. My name's Nate Sherman. I'm the Director of Human Resources and Leadership Development here in the district, but I've held three other positions during the 19 years that I've worked here. I was the high school assistant principal, I was the director of academic services, and maybe if you know my name, it probably was from my time that I sent at Greenwood Elementary as the principal. I worked there for 16 years. So, I'm not a River Falls native, but my wife Amber and I did send all three of our kids through the school district. It'd be considered a River Falls to be our home. We're honored to work and live in a great community. So, during the time that I had all of those positions, I was also the school district safety coordinator, while being principal and director of academic services. And I was asked to give a presentation, and Dave told me to keep it under 45 minutes, so I said if I could do that. Actually, he told me five, and I think we could meet that goal. So, in River Falls, where our school of safety is a priority for us, and you could, if you look back to the mission statement, you could see the word safety in the statement, and parents send their kids to school, and our teachers come to school, there's an expectation that they're safe while they're there. So, we do invest a lot in school safety. I would mention to you, before I get into the nuts and bolts of the multifaceted approach to school safety, that a lot of the work that we've done has come through grant funding at the state general level, but also through district budget and referendum projects that we've been able to successfully pass due to the support of the community over the last 15 or so years. So, I want to start first with physical safety, because I think when people think about having safe schools, fortunately, we hear about physical safety events that happen across the country, so this is primarily where people's minds go. The first thing I want to mention is that all of our schools have secure entries, which means that during the school day, no one can get into our buildings unless they are buzzed in through the office. This was a change that was placed maybe seven to 10 years ago, something that we've been working on. We recognize that it's a little bit of an inconvenience at times for our employees and for the visitors to our school, but we know it's the right thing to do to make sure that we're letting people in or keeping people out that we shouldn't. We also have added cameras throughout the district, both inside and outside of buildings, shatterproof glass, visitor policies. We have a threat assessment protocol. Our staff are trained in the ALICE protocol, which is an acronym for alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. So, we have people who have been trained, and we've then trained our staff to train our students in how to follow suit. It's a non-sequential approach to deal with an intruder situation, should something like that happen. We do regular drills related to that, and years ago, when we first started, we had some problems with families, which we certainly could understand, but I think we've garnered the trust of the people in the community. Now, rare for parents to say, "I'd like my child to sit out." So, that's a good sign from our perspective. One of the biggest elements I wanted to touch on tonight, or most important, is the partnership that we have with the city through local police. We are very blessed to have two school resource officers that we share in funding to support our schools, and we view our school resource officers as regular members of our staff. They're teachers, they're counselors, they're investigators, and primarily, they're relationship builders. So, in trying to be proactive to make sure our schools are stable, these people are connecting with kids in an informal way, but also spending a lot of time in classrooms giving lessons. I'm sure that our SROs have been providing lessons to our elementary students on Halloween safety, coming up just around the corner. Hopefully, it doesn't rain for the kids, but we rely heavily on them as members of our staff, and they do great work. We also have a partnership with the city in how we communicate. This was something we engaged in maybe a handful of years ago, again, through some state funding, where we are able to attach into the city's repeater and use our walkie-talkies District Y. So, communication is key during emergency situations. We can't count on landlines, maybe even cell phones, so the walkie-talkies hopefully would allow us to do that. That's something we also partner with the city. We also have a partnership with the University of Wisconsin River Falls, the police force there, so we feel really well-connected and have regular check-ins and meetings with those groups over the course of years. Another area that I wanted to talk about tonight was emotional safety. In all of our seven school buildings, we have full-time school counselors, and we also have two social workers that support our students and our families to make sure that they're emotionally well. We have staff that are trained in youth mental health, first aid, suicide awareness, and prevention. And we also partner with some local, maybe not in River Falls, what we call co-located services. So, Collier Clinic out of Hudson has access to meet with some of our students with permission. permission of parents, of course, that are referred by our staff to come and provide counseling services on site. And then we also have a partnership with restorative services and they work exclusively with the high school and the Renaissance Charter Academy, providing free counseling, whether parents have insurance or not, to students that are in need. So physical safety obviously comes to mind, but emotional safety is really, really important for our students and staff as well. And then the last thing I'll mention is cyber safety. And I remember talking about this when it was a new topic. It's not a new topic anymore, but it's just as important, probably more so. So things that we're doing stem really around being proactive with cyber safety. We have a couple of pieces of technology that we use in the district. One is a technology that's called Securely, which is an online monitoring system. When our students are using the Google platform that the district provides, it can key into key descriptors or words or searches that students are engaging in. So we can be notified and look into those matters right away. We also use Speak Up, Speak Out program, which is a state funded program right now. And it's anonymous reporting platform. So we try really hard to build relationships with all of our students so that if they have concerns, they'll come directly to us. But tries we might, some students won't. And as much as they're on their phones, they have easy access to put in a concern that then will be funneled back to us through the Speak Up, Speak Up, Speak Out program. So we can look into concerns that the students are raising. In addition to those things, we are putting our students into a lot of situations where they're learning about how to appropriately use technology through classroom lessons. So lessons on media balance and well-being, a lot of research right now about the impact of cell phone use on our youth. So we're trying to get out front of that with our kids and families. Privacy and security, digital footprint and identity, relationships and communication, cyber bullying, news and media literacy, and things like digital drama and hate speech. So that was my five minutes to talk about the three tiers of safety that we have in the district, but I'd be happy to answer questions if anyone.
Schools have to be safe for kids to learn. So are there any questions about this?
Add something here that this was, school safety is really very important to us. If kids don't feel safe, if their families don't feel safe, most of the rest of the stuff we do kind of is really, uh, does work, right? So we've been really fortunate to have this working relationship, not just of the SROs, but just generally the quality of life in this community and the way in which we approach it is, has been important for us. And, um, Dave mentioned the retirements that we had up here. I think for me, my 16 years on the board, one of the toughest retirements for me to see last year was Officer G retiring. One of the cool things was I chatted with him last spring about, he was here long enough to see a number of his kids that he, who was kindergartners graduate and watched them graduate for several years and sort of set the pace for standard for us in this district as to what that means. And this notion and the debate nationally, should police officers be in schools or not? It's not a debate in this community. Those officers not only represent themselves well, take care of our kids well, but they represent our police department well. And I think the relationship that they have had reflects well on our police department, but also the attitude that our kids can grow and develop with our police department and in this community and the way they feel. Cause, um, as I started off by saying, student and family safety is just so important to this community generally and certainly to our schools. So Gordy, that's, the staff, um, is, has been great, but this partnership, we really appreciate that with the cities.
You hired him back.
Yeah, you can't.
Really?
Yeah. He's, you know, he's, he's working as a very part-time lunchroom supervisor. Got him back at the sports.
When it's a good place to work, it's hard to stay away. So, all right. The last school district update will be, is really a celebration. It's about our school forest and so they have to be with our guests as well.
Yes. So we're, we're going to share a little bit about the school forest. Just not knowing people's depth of background information on that, I, I'm newer to it. So I have four representatives from our school, um, forest committee that have been kind of there for a very long time. So two, two representatives from Rotary, Rick Wilson and Dale Jorgensen. And then two of our staff members that have played a critical role, Lauren Kaminsky and Michaela Sanaki. And so I'm going to go through and kind of give the summary of things. And I've told them, uh, we all collaborated to, to create this. A lot of the pictures were either from, from anyone but me, to be honest with you. But, uh, and so we all collaborated together. I said, I'll speak to it. And if I, I get out of turn or if I, I say something wrong, they are going to, to step in as, as maybe better historians with it. So, um, so just a, a really broad overview as far as the timeline goes, the school forest in its current location has been around, uh, since the 30s and 40s. So the school district has had it since 1930 to 40. It was in, in sort of widespread use for a very long time. However, uh, over a period of time, the, the district through development lost access to it. And so there was a period of time where we had this wonderful resource and it was tricky for us to, uh, access it in a way that was meaningful for students. So in other words, we could get there, but, um, the logistics of getting there made it not really a usable space. And so, um, as recently as 2009, uh, we, we had some really important representatives engage in, in land swap conversations with landowners. And that landowner was, was able to sort of recognize the legacy that could take place if that took, if that happened. Kenny River Land Trust, Rotary and anonymous, uh, supporters and advocates kind of made that happen. And then it's that for a period of time where we were very close, but there was just some other infrastructure pieces that needed to come together. And we're really excited over the last couple of years for that to, to come to fruition. So this is kind of a broad spectrum of, a broad picture of what we're talking about and where the school forest is. So the meadow or prairie is highlighted there. Um, and you can kind of gain a perspective if you're comfortable and useful, yeah, I used to wear double F's there. So one big piece that had to take place was improvement of that access road and a logical spot for a spark. And so, um, over the last couple of years, starting in 21, 22, uh, 2021, 2022, uh, the entrance at County FF was, uh, developed. And in addition to that, the roadway from double F to the school forest was cleared. And that was really a volunteer piece that, that took place two to three years ago. It was about half mile long. And before that, that, that was really not, uh, something that was passable for our buses and for our students to use. So then the last piece that we're most excited about, the final tenth of a mile from kind of a, a stopping point to a full turnaround was completed. And so now our buses, as of the spring of 2024, can go into the school forest, do a full turnaround, drop off students for, for a field trip, whether that's a block at the high school or an all-day experience. So what that has meant is enhanced educational opportunities. And so those enhanced educational opportunities allow students access to all the different ecosystems that are part of the school forest. So whether it's adjacent to the Kenny with exploring ag work or, or the Rocky Branch, uh, fourth graders during ECO week, um, or the fourth graders at Westside or Meyer Middle School students participating, uh, we basically are really proud of the fact that we've had much more educational opportunities take place in the last 18 months that had, that had taken place in a very long time. That, that would not have been possible without a whole bunch of volunteers that I couldn't name all at once. So we're really excited just to share with the, with the city, some of the awesome field trips that have taken place, uh, over the last couple of years. And again, another piece with these field trips that is fantastic is members of the school forest committee volunteers really, uh, help bolster the ability to have smaller groups of instruction for students. So it's, it's not one teacher out there. Uh, it's, it's, uh, highly knowledgeable volunteers that are helping out. It also helps decrease the level of anxiety for a teacher who says, well, I love, I know this is important, but I maybe don't have the background knowledge in some of these areas. Michaela and Lauren and other volunteers are, are able to help them, uh, to access that. So, um, lots of different fun pictures. I did want to highlight a couple of pieces too, in conjunction with the community forest. Uh, one of the awesome pieces for all of our community to, to be able to participate in at the school forest is the candlelight walk that takes place in September. It's supposed to be fall when it takes place. It was about 85 degrees. I think, uh, this, this past September was really exciting, but a neat, uh, again collaborative experience. And so not just students that can access the school forest, but our community as well. So just by the numbers, right? So numbers, people, data, people. In fall of 23, we had 321 students over five trips. And then by the fall of 24, we're up to, uh, five trips and 556 students. And we, and we kind of depressed the fall of 2024 because some of the building work that was taking place out there. So we're very excited about the growth and expansion and feel like there's, there's more to come. And so this just outlines some of the exciting pieces. So one of the, uh, Rotary is here tonight and, and I wanted to highlight another really awesome partnership that we've had, uh, as a school district. And that's the, the Rotary is providing the funding for the construction of a pavilion that's located right at that turnaround site that I was highlighting. And the, uh, the pavilion and, and related site work will allow us to have a structure there that is to make more opportunities for field trips to take. So here is a picture of the progress that has been made this fall. It started with the clearing and creating a, a safe path towards a safe place. And there is Rick and some of the Rotary's members getting a tour. And this is, this is the, the most recent update. I think this is from, from yesterday. It shows, um, it shows the actual construction. So less of the building has been out, they were this weekend and last week, uh, and the construction is taking place. The roof even maybe got on today. So by the end of the week, we feel like the pavilion will be in place. And then after the pavilion is placed, in place and they'll come and they'll pour the concrete. So by the time the snowfalls have been good, cause the snow hasn't fallen yet, fallen yet, um, we should have a pavilion in place that we're really excited about. That would not have been possible without the donation of Rotary and the, and the connection with Rotary, not just, hey, here's the money figured out, but really managing the entire project. So working with the builders, facilitating, making sure that, that the work is done correctly. So we're, we're lucky as a school district. It's a, it's a fun thing to highlight the partnerships that allow opportunities for students and we wanted to take a moment to do that. Did I miss anything on the pavilion piece or any field trips? I got a couple of the pieces.
Got them. Yeah. This is really, really exciting. This means a big opportunity for getting more kids, even at younger ages out there. Awesome.
Yeah. Can I have five minutes to brag about what Rotary has done? Okay. Um, Dale Jorgensen, I have kind of co-managed this project. Dale's got more history both in River Falls and, uh, with Rotary and the school forest than I do. While I've been listening to David, I thought about 45 minutes worth of stuff that I'm going to take in Nate's, Nate's time for. But, um, one of the things I wanted to say is the, upon a volunteer work has just been nothing short of amazing. When you talked about nothing short of amazing, you talked about the access road, you couldn't even walk back a few years ago. The Kenny River Land Trust got the community forest, which actually gave us that 66 foot wide easily. We knew we couldn't put a building up until we could get construction vehicles there. And then when we first got the access road, the straight shot to the meadow was, it would be impossible for even a pickup truck to make. And then more amazing volunteer work in the beginning of 2024, I thought we weren't going to be able to do this this year. And then a bunch of volunteers with chainsaws and loppers and whatever else cleared that last tenth of a mile. And that just made, you know, that made it possible. That bus turnaround, we've gotten a semi in there to dump off the materials. Now I've got the vehicles in there doing the building, which we hope will have concrete by the end of the week. That's, that's the latest things to Dale. The only other thing I wanted to brag about is we have gotten almost, it's a little over $7,000 from other Rotary clubs in the district. Rotary has a very collaborative approach to things. We have a history of giving to other clubs. We finally got payback. So a chunk of the money, Dale's done a great job of negotiating. He really took the lead on the contractor part of the job. I took the lead on the district grant part of the job and the money, part of what we had, part of what we got from other clubs and a couple of private donations have made all this possible. So, but Dale, you want to add to that?
No, other than I provided David with some updated history, which I, I don't want to forget because when we look back at, uh, the beginning of the school forest, it's hard to get all of the details. And I want to make sure that these are all captured. And there's a lot, a couple of organizations and a number of people that have been involved that I would want to make sure are in the history. But, um, I'm extremely excited. I grew up on the river and I'm just so happy to see the students in River Falls have access to that, that great treasure that we have in this town.
Thank you. So, so there's just one last piece that I wanted to highlight and that had to do with the Prairie Trail accessibility. So through a grant, Pierce County Public Health, the district was, uh, able to make the Prairie Trail, which is one of the trails that is there accessible. I can add one more. Uh, you, you can see a few pictures of that accessibility work. And so this is while it was in progress. And so, uh, this design will allow that trail to be wheelchair accessible. So you, you can pull into the, the spaces that were described there. If a child, uh, is on the field trip, they can, they can interact and participate in that element. We have a donation for an all-three wheelchair that, that, that we can use as well, that we have access to. So, um, we're really excited about that piece. One, it makes it accessible not only for, uh, wheelchairs, but it also just makes that trail more accessible for people who maybe have some, some, they can still move, but if there's mobility issues, um, so we're really excited about that. There's still lots of work to do. We've got wayfinding, we've got, um, other projects that are in, in trouble to make it more accessible and things like that. So we wanted to kind of wrap up with that, that partnership piece.
It's been a great example of community cooperation. I mean, it really has been a lot.
So we all know that River Falls is a great place, place to live and this is an example. What a wonderful opportunity. This is for all of the kids in the district and then it's open to people in the community. So are there any questions about this wonderful news? Thank you for your, your energy, your vision, your creativity, your follow-through. It's been remarkable.
I, I have a question. Is there going to be any kind of, of public, you know, maybe after the winter, some kind of public celebration, um, you know, break a bottle of cider across?
We will make sure that.
Okay, good, good.
We talked about that.
Once it's warm again.
We have, I shouldn't, I shouldn't have said, by the way, that I'm really glad you invited us here tonight for two reasons. Wanted to get to brag about what Rotary is doing and has done, but also tonight's Rotary board meeting, by being here, I get to skip the board. But I think, I think one of the things we're going to talk about is how we might have some kind of a, either something quick to make in hall, maybe even to make something, let people know that this has happened. And then maybe something bigger in the spring outdoors once the weather.
Right. I mean, you know, there are some Earth Day things, maybe incorporate that, but, but it's, it's a wonderful community resource and, you know, it's, the more people know about it, the better.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
All right. If there are no more questions, then I think I will turn it over to you. Junior?
Well, first off, thanks for hosting and sharing. We very appreciate it. Thanks for inviting us. And we're just going to go over a few things that we have going on. I shall let Scott do it and we'll worry about it. There he is. I'll let Scott do it. Much better talk. I wanted, I do want to say, thanks staff for setting us all up tonight. Thanks for all that, guys.
Yeah, that was a good segue to start with. Thanks for the school district for hosting us and, uh, setting the bar higher for workshops. Council doesn't get choices for foods. They just, and so, like, Bill will turn left, turn right. You can grab this. So, so that was good. Um, I do want to quickly introduce staff that's in the room too. And they'll stick around a little bit if people have specific questions that we don't cover in the presentation, but Amy Peterson, media development director. I see John Smith's helping us with media, Tyler Mason, communications. Kevin Westhouse, I saw, utility director, giveaway. He thinks he's like Oprah, everybody knows him. So Jennifer Smith, uh, our chief of staff, Chief Gordon Young, and the finance director, Josh Solinger. So did I miss any? I'm so happy that they could join us this evening. So John, do you have slides? So, John, do you have slides? Very impressed with the school district's communication staff. Your slides are great. You won the slide battle. My slides are a lot more like Nate's. So we're going to talk briefly, you're not looking at my screen here, hopefully we'll be lining up. City strategic initiatives and our strategic plan. A couple of major projects for the community of the fire station and the River Falls Public Library. And then we'll talk about housing and development updates. There's lots of other things as both, both parties had on their list to talk about. But those are the, those are the four that we just focused on for this evening. In your slide, you can, and I don't worry about this. Our strategic initiatives are focused around connected community, economic vitality, financial sustainability, and quality municipal services. These strategic initiatives are reviewed by the city council. And they provide guidance and we'll be doing a workshop as a council again to, to review the strategic initiatives. We'll be doing that in January, February of this year. Many of these projects are long-term projects, so they might go through a couple of years. Each year we do, each year we do a survey. The one year we do the National Employee Survey and the other year we do the National Community Survey. So twenty-two will be time again for a statistically significant random sample survey of the community. That gives the council a lot of feedback that they use when setting the strategic initiatives. We're continuing to review the hydroelectric license for the, the two dams, the upper dam in particular. And so that's in progress with the federal, federal electric regulatory mission. And we are also working actively with a major project at the university with their Science and Technology Center. So much like the school district, that's a pretty involved construction project. And the city has a lot of involvement in trying to, even on projects where most of the review is by the state through commercial. We're providing some on-the-ground expertise and advice about how to make that process efficient and resulting in good projects. We also are working with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers on the Kenny Corridor Plan that was adopted by the community after a significant public process to determine what the future of the Kenny Corridor was going to look like. We have engaged in some really significant and exciting discussions with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and those who passed the discussion phase. Now where we have a pretty significant opportunity for them to come and make about a fifteen million dollar investment in the community. Through the federal, federal enabling Clean Water Act funds. Economic vitality, we have made some attempts to do cooperative boundary agreements. We have a successful cooperative boundary agreement with the town of Kinnikinnick. And next on that list was the town of Clifton. The town of Clifton, after we engaged with them, said that they're not prepared to, to spend the time on that project with us now. So that's kind of a, that's one of those projects that won't get completed on the initiatives. We have completed phase one of the Man Valley Corporate Park. We did the ribbon cutting of that recently. That's an over two-hundred acre corporate park on the community's west side. And that includes property near some property that the school district owns, just west of De Sanctus Park. And it's bounded by County U, Radio Road. We are starting some preliminary work and analysis prep for Main Street Corridor Plan. The community will do a significant planning effort similar to what we did for the Kenny Corridor on, on its downtown. So since we have so many other projects in the hopper right now, that, that large effort is likely to be a year or two away. But we're doing a lot of the preliminary data collection, geography work. And we also have had some help from the University of Wisconsin's Uni-verse City Project, where they're doing some initial analysis on options downtown. Financial sustainability, we, we continue to update our five-year fiscal plan. And then we're, we also began the construction and will begin operations of a biosolids facility. We moved from a regional model with a number of our neighbors to handling that biosolids material in the community. And the reason that's under financial sustainability is we had some concerns about the long-term financial sustainability of the, the regional. And we did quite, consulted, played a review with the Utility Advisory Board on kind of what the long-term projections would be for that. And, and it was a significant, millions of dollars of savings over time for us constructionally. Plus the added benefit of reducing all the trucks on the road, basically hauling water back and forth between. Quality Municipal Services, we are, we completed the Powell Avenue Bridge Construction. That was a state project that we, we lobbied for, for some time and were successful. And we're completing the Wasen Lane Urbanization Project right now, which includes a pretty significant change to Cascade and Wasan intersection that'll significantly improve traffic flow and in particular pedestrian safety, but also vehicle safety at that very busy intersection. That is going to be completed later in, in this year. Fire station initial design was what we had started out with, but as we transition to the, to the next slide. We've gone from trying to imagine and doing initial design and engineering of the fire station. To moving forward with construction of a new apparatus and operation support space at the existing site. And then we'll be remodeling the historic fire apparatus bay and continuing to use that for administrative support, including some onsite training, training remaxes for the. So that's a ten million dollar project with about one point four million in congressionally directed spending being provided to the community. So we were successful in working with our congressional delegation, in particular Representative Van Orden and Senator Baldwin, to, to get the one point four million in federal support. And as you've seen in your construction projects, inflation on construction is significant. So this was initially imagined as about a six point five million dollar project. Significant impacts. There's not a lot of lumber in it, so that the lumber price decline did not help us very much. These are some pretty, pretty nice garages that we're building. And it will provide some support space for our all-volunteer paid per call fire. The next project, which was also on our list, our dream list, and has become reality quickly. We have taken a very aggressive approach at the direction of council on identifying federal and state financing for priorities of the community. And so we have made that a very significant effort of, of the, the, the staff, not just the administrative staff, but staff in every department of the city. And we've had some, some early success with that effort, including a flexible facilities grant from the state of Wisconsin for four million dollars for, for some upgrades at the library. So this will be library-wide renovations and equipment upgrades, additional study rooms, refresh of the team space, more meeting space, and technology improvements across the library. So there again, four million seems like a lot of money, but that is a thirty-five thousand square foot facility. So there's a lot of space there to, to refresh. And so we're going to do our very best for the community to make, make a big difference on a thirty-year-old facility that a lot of people still call the new library. It's, I have to say, the community's vision there has really played, played forward well. And we're dealing with very, very good bones with that library and the library staff and, and city staff really done a great job of keeping that building in good shape so that we can spend this four million dollars on, instead of fixing mechanicals and things, really fixing the spaces that the public's going to use. So that's.
Scott, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there going to be, is that new information, is there going to be a need for philanthropy in addition to that four million?
The library board and the library foundation have not determined yet in what shape future philanthropy could take. Prior to this grant, they had been moving down a path of raising all the money needed to do, to do these improvements. So this obviously changes that game a little bit. Understanding that the four million is not the full extent of what the library board and the library foundation have visions for needed improvements in libraries. So I, I don't want to speak for them yet because they, they get to do that. But it is likely that the library board and library foundation will kind of determine an alternative path for philanthropy. But certainly we expect that that'll be a big part of what ultimate result in the final projects. Whether that's in the next two years here or the next five years or ten years. The, the, the community through its city has put a lot of investment into that. And then as most of you know, there was a lot of philanthropy in the first go-around. And so that'll be needed to, to keep the pace because it's, it is a huge library.
It is such an asset.
So it's, it's something that we're really, we know that there's going to be regular investment needed to keep. Scott, history question for you. You know where the old library is? Do I know where the old? Where it was? Yeah, it's likely to be demolished for the fire station. It was very small. There was one before that, but I don't know the history well enough to know whose house it was in. I think part of the history of the library is that somebody gave their parlor or something for the library. So we have a long history of that being important. And certainly the library is, is now, and we hope will be enhanced, a big part of the school district in providing that connection to learning. Additional spaces to extend what the school district can provide and also extend the hours of some of the programs the school district might want, want to partner with this on. So that, it's, it is really exciting. The, this project needs to be substantially started by July first of twenty-five. And it needs to be completed by September thirtieth of twenty-six. So it, there are significant strings attached to accepting a grant like this. One is that you have to move at the speed. So what that means, and it's good for us to talk about in this format, is that River Falls typical community engagement process, which is extensive, is not likely to fit with this timeframe. That essentially the library board will need to speak for the community in order to have any chance of getting this project up and going. The good news is they already did charrettes, they already did surveys, they already have the, the community survey and library that we previously mentioned. So, so we'll be able to do that. And that's frankly, one of the reasons we were able to win the grant, is our history of being able to get things done well in a short period of time. Next slide. As I mentioned briefly, we opened the largest corporate park in the city. Make sure our slides match. So there's more than two-hundred acres for light industrial manufacturing. We also have already an agreement for ten acres of residential development. And then this project has opened up two miles of multi-use path and sixty-three acres of conservancy for the community. So a real big asset for all of us, not just the, the future residents of the corporate park, but all, all members of the River Falls community that have, have access to all that. And we were just able to, to have this crazy October weather for a grand opening. So eighty, I understand eighty tomorrow and snowing out. So.
Yeah.
Like, that's life in, life, life in River Falls.
Yeah, I think that, that path around there is just awesome. Have you ever thought that up? It's a great idea to have that.
Yeah, we're, and we're looking forward to that path then as part of a bigger planned connectivity for the community. So go right up to Radio Road and around. So you're really starting to get a very robust network that the council's been working on for decades. Housing. We have seen, we've done two housing studies with the Community Development Department and Maxfield, who does, primarily does private sector development, projection. And so they have said you'd need a lot of housing. This is a good place. People are going to keep coming here. And they gave us some estimates on what housing needs might be for twenty-thirty. And then we are tracking, like you, data internally, we're kind of doing benchmarks to try to understand. So, so if you hear people say, boy, you're building a lot of housing, that is true. If you say, if you hear people saying it's not enough, that is also true. So those two things can exist in the same place. In particular, we'll continue to see a big need for senior housing and that'll be key for us. All housing helps other housing. The fundamental, fundamental message of the housing needs assessments were rich housing, poor housing, however you want to category these extremes, these extreme language that people use. Every level of housing impacts the overall market and overall curve. And so by having, let's say, market rate senior housing or even premium senior housing, that helps all of the other levels of the market because those folks are moving from something to that senior housing. They likely aren't moving from senior to senior housing. And so all the units that we can get built on some of the great projects that have been constructed in the last five years here in Falls, that all helps start to get some churn in the market because we just don't have it. There, there's almost zero vacancy in River Falls. Houses are purchased oftentimes before they're constructed. I met, at the new teacher breakfast, I met a teacher that was going to be my new neighbor and, you know, they'd already bought the house before it even had, you know, tieback wrap on the outside of it. So, and I don't think they moved in yet. So all types of housing for all different types of folks and different levels. And then we're monitoring the affordability, which is relative to people's income. So monitoring that across, the incomes in Falls have risen on a community-wide basis. So affordability has improved somewhat based mostly on incomes going up, not, not the prices of housing. So housing prices continue to, to, to be fairly unstable. But we're making really good progress on multifamily for rent. And then single family has been steady throughout. So kind of every year, there's a steady amount of that and then the other. I, I expect twenty-five to be a big, big year for us and beyond. We always see a little bit, this is anecdotal, but we always see a little pause with the elections. Developers kind of say, well, let's see how things are going. Those who do the banking industry probably know that. It's a good excuse for them to just take a breath. And then come February, everything's got to be done in March. So we'll, we'll see likely very continued serious pressure on the housing market, including a lot of areas north, southeast, and west. So, so we've had growth all, all parts of the community, which I've been in contact with, previously with Jamie Benson, where you're trying to do your planning and now with Superintendent Bell. So it's, we're trying to help each other understand what's happening. What are you seeing in schools? What do you see at the kindergarten? What do you see for developers? So that we can, we can have a measured and incremental approach to dealing with the growth. So that's it for me. Like I said, we brought a gaggle of staff, but the intent was to just give you a very quick update and see if you might have questions on, on those or other topics.
You know, just a previous slide, you had a Clifton boundary and you said you'd end at another township, work with Clifton. What is that?
So, so Wisconsin has a land use laws that relate to zoning and, and use of property. And there's some overlap between cities and the incorporated towns. And so with the example I used, the town of Kinnikinnick, the town board and the city council got together and made agreement on where we meet and what, what are each of their goals for the future and how, where do those match? And then tries to bring down the temperature on growth and development in those kind of borderlands. One of the things that's important to understand about Wisconsin is the city is never taking land from the town. The city is never taking land from the town. The town doesn't own the land, neither does the city. It's always a property owner decision in Wisconsin. So Wisconsin is a strong property owner, right? It's rarely, there's some very few instances, and they haven't been used very much in the last 50 years of Wisconsin history. Where somebody is annexed into a city against their will, so to speak, where maybe their neighbors all voted to come in and they didn't. But it isn't the city kind of gobbling up the land as an entity. It's typically through requests from the property. And so. Despite that fact, there still is lots of tension. And so. These boundary agreements try to clear the way for us to, to talk together. So they're becoming. More common to talk about, but not more common to actually execute. So. It's hard work to actually. Not get everything you want. Give up a little power. In, in decision making. And that's what those cooperative boundaries do. The city ends up giving up some of its ability to dictate things. The town then gives up some ability to dictate things and then you try to come to some, some, some agreement. And so we have that with the town of Kenny. And the next one on the list was the town of Clifton. And then the council tell me if we're going to move on to some other town next. So.
It's interesting to interject. I think the, the taxpayers assume those kinds of conversations are happening between local units of government. Wouldn't it be, we're all the same taxpayers, right? And the fact that they typically are challenged. Just the fact that our two groups meet, you know, in my state board, this doesn't happen very often around the state.
Yeah, this is an uncommon.
So it's, I, I appreciate it, but I, I also appreciate what you're saying about where everyone, the township is around.
Well, and then throw the county.
Yeah.
Just to interject a little bit, Alan, too, we're a little unique in River Falls because we've got four. Four towns that surround us in two different counties. So there's a lot of. Moving parts and there's different relationships with different towns. The only thing I'll say.
Can I imagine?
We do have a lot of cooperation though with our neighbor towns. We have cooperation for EMS, we have cooperation for fire. We're cooperating on law enforcement. So there's, there's just any number of cooperation examples. When it gets to land use and zoning, then that typically is a higher level of.
Takes longer.
You know, one, one more thing about your, as you mentioned, the presentation with the housing's going, really appreciate that information and staying on top of that, keeping us informed. Supporting us. The more I read about what's going on demographically nationally, I think we'll sell both houses, but I think we're going to compete for families. The birth rate's going down. I shared with the board of Wall Street article just recently, birth rate's going down. There's all kinds of reasons for it, whether it comes back up or not. But families who have resources to relocate are fewer and fewer and fewer going forward. So things like our library, things like the. Forest, community forest, things like, you know, us working together, that's really, hopefully we'll continue to make River Falls and attract the community families, I think, which is an important. Dimension. It's not the only dimension of a community this size, for sure. That's an important.
Before we move on to number seven, are there any other questions?
What Alan just shared, that was interesting. Where, where do you project the enrollment numbers to be now and off to the future?
Our most recent demographic study showed we would be flat. Year, one year before now for the next four or five years and then we'd grow the years back to 10. And so that's what we, that's what we kind of built some of our projections on as far as what we, what the referendums were. Slow and steady. Yeah. So, so somewhat flat for the next three or four years and then, and then not emergent growth, but growth in years five to 10.
And that growth is from the, the.
Elementary.
But we can manage, but it's slow and steady. We can manage that much better than we're able to manage quick.
But it's, but it's, but it's unique because, you know, as you know, Hudson's been growing substantially, but their enrollment in their school district's been dropping noticeably. So they're growing in some different ways. We would rather not grow, see us grow in that direction. Rather see that slow and steady growth. Helps us for budgeting and planning purposes and all of that. But we'll have to see. Do we continue to be a good place for families to relocate to or not?
Anything else?
I have some comments, but they kind of pulled into the ideas for follow up then.
All right. Well, let's move on to number seven then. That's to discuss any ideas for future meetings or discussion. I think the idea would be that we would identify some topics and then we would ask David and Scott to confirm on themselves and come up with a plan. So.
This is great. I think it's really wonderful for the city leadership to understand the school district strategic plan. And we have, you know, such a great plan in place. And for us to understand the city's plan. And then if you look at them side by side, where are the overlaps and where could we be collaborating even more? So to Alan's point that if we're going to have a sex, you know, obviously the economy of our community is really important. If we're going to drive that in the future, it's going to depend on families coming here, working families, people who, you know, can fill the jobs and man the businesses and need things worked. So how could we collaborate with the schools being such a cornerstone to what families are looking for? And the other things they're looking for are of course affordable housing that I know you guys are working night and day on creating. But the reason that Hudson is in the dilemma they're in, and the reason we're kind of looking at it in the face is because right here, close to, in the Twin Cities metro, the housing's so expensive. They're jumping over us and going to Robertson, going to Baldwin, and those school districts are growing much faster. So how could we collaborate? The things that come to mind are affordable, family affordable housing. Childcare. Childcare is a major problem. You know, what if, just dreaming, what if River Falls, what if we, the city and the school district work together to make sure we had. Affordable childcare in this community. That would bring people in to this community if they knew. People aren't going to go to work unless they know their kids can be taken care of well. So childcare, I think, is something, and how we make it work as a community. Obviously, it's not, the school district, I think, our legal obligation is from three years and up, right? To educate, but four years and up, three or four. That's another thing. And then another thing is communication. I love the communication that comes out from the city. And Scott, I think you, you and your team do just a great job at your annual overview of what's going on in our city and what's happening. But what if that was, was even broader? What if the city viewed, you know, our schools as our schools? And when we're communicating about the state of the city, we're also communicating about, in collaboration with, here's a page on how schools are doing. You know, here's a page on how healthcare is looking in our community and collaborating with healthcare. Here's how we're doing in, you know, building community with our churches in town. How are our, our churches contributing and how are we all working together to build that really tightly woven net that creates great community? So I know that's a little bit vague, but just thinking about the communication, I think too, when we're putting out a school publication, how much harder is it to include things about. You know, other things that are happening with our partners. So, so the same, same with city. If we're surveying, why not survey about the city and survey about the schools? And what do you think about healthcare out here? Because I know the healthcare, healthcare organizations are obligated to do these surveys every so often. So those are just a few things that I think of. If you think of what makes a really strong community, it's, it's what the city does. And our city does so many great things to make this a great city. It's what the schools do. It's what healthcare does. It's what the churches are doing. And of course, the businesses. So wouldn't it be fun to kind of create a whole community wide vision for, for, you know, River Falls 2050?
I have it on the list.
There you go.
Other ideas, Alyssa.
One of the things that I, I think we talked about this last time, but I live very close with Greenwood and Meyer. So my kids don't have to worry about transportation until high school. But one of the things I was thinking of that you guys brought up in your survey is getting kids involved in extracurricular activities. And I'm thinking about this on a citywide, you know, we have. The city, the school district, CBTC and the university, all here that provide great opportunities for community members. Is there a way for these four groups to come together and talk about some sort of like. Activity bus or something that allows for people to, after school. Find ways to get around because, you know, for lots of families, transportation's an issue. And on top of that, parents work later. So picking kids up from stuff. It, like I know, when I was a kid, I also lived close to school. So my parents didn't have to worry about that. But the kids lived out in the country, couldn't do a lot of things if their parents couldn't come and get them. So finding a way to create, to break down obstacles to transportation for both. Our school kids, our community members, and, you know, some sort of cooperative financial agreement, obviously we'd have to have. But yeah, and I want a second and times 100, the childcare situation. And I know. I try really hard to stay off the River Falls Facebook community page. But some of the interesting posts that you see there a lot are people looking for childcare. And like desperately not being able to go back, decisions having to be made around the, but not, not having the ability to find a affordable quality childcare. And so. I think that would be a great initiative.
Well, speaking of Scott, would you like to talk about the, you know, Little Adventures? I think wasn't that this morning?
It was. Yeah, we had the ribbon cutting, or not ribbon cutting. We had so many things. I guess it's hard to keep it straight. We had a groundbreaking for Little Adventures Sterling Ponds location. So the city.
It's a daycare center.
So we, we worked with the owner. Did she say how many years ago? 17 years ago on our first location. And then now we're working with her on what would be her third location, but the second that she owns. So that'll increase the spots because she'll be going for. Like 75 or 80 spots at the location next to Quick Trip to, to like 110, I think, at. The new Sterling Ponds location. So, so we're actively, that certainly is a, that's. The housing is not actually as big, as mentioned as much by the employers as childcare.
It's almost something like we should have a community summit around childcare, you know, at the schools, the businesses, the parents. And, and let's, you know, get a community wide strategy around, what are we going to do about this?
The state.
What?
And the state.
And the state. Yeah, the state. Yeah, there is some state policy that could help. Yeah.
I like being a real optimist. Mentioning the state has helped.
I think that probably goes more to the counties would need assistance. It seems interesting too with this new adventures. Prescott is doubling the size. They have a addition to their new adventures down there. So they're going from X to 2X. And they're already filled before it's even done built. So, and, and the River Falls one is already, they went from 75, 80 to 110. And that's already spoken for. So they have no capacity.
Yeah, I suspected if we did a childcare needs assessment, similar to the housing, you'd find the same, same kind of things that. Earth to certain age, there's this many spots needed. You know, one to four, there's this many spots. And so similar to the work that I remember us doing as a community on. School districts, what, two strategic plans ago or three maybe, 2010 or. When they talked about the. You know, the 4K program and some of those things and the idea that already there was a big pinch then. So certainly that's something we hear a lot in the industry.
So that certainly argues in favor of your idea of a community summit. Are there other things that we should point on the list? I think it's a.
I, I do like this idea of sharing some communication. So when we do our updates newsletter, to include some information, for example, what the public library. And what's going on there. Cause I think families would like to know that. There are some things like that that the city's doing that we might want to communicate to, what we do with the parents and things and vice versa.
Well, you know, one thing is when we do, when you do the, you think about the school forest, you know, maybe we could have like new maps of all the new bike trails in town. Sort of communicating a little bit more about those opportunities.
Yeah. The other reason I, I mean, it's kind of selfish on the school board part. These guys have heard this before, but you know, I should say, you know that you've been around too long when. I used to babysit two of the people on this board. But when I first started.
Alan.
No, it's not Alan. But when I first started on the school board, one out of every two households had a K-12 kid in, in their home. And now it's about one in five households. And so getting communication into the households in our community and having, whether you have children in the district or you don't have children in the district. You're connected. Like David and I were talking this morning about the community education program that we have. You know, that really brings adults into the schools. So how do we, if I'm new to town and I'm getting this mail, how do I just feel this certain level of comfort in the collaboration with the cornerstones of our community? Communicating with me and when I'd like to read about what's going on with the city, but then there's also a page about, here's the highlights from the school district. So I feel connected to it. And it's, it's, and it's not, it wouldn't cost anything really, you know, for us to do more of that together.
Other things. Two comments. The first one is we need to continue doing this. We are, I think Alan pointed it out that we are unique in our community that we do it. So this needs to be a continuation. Or a tradition that continues. And the second thing is, thank you for agreeing to meet on a day that isn't preceding one of your city council meetings. It allowed us to be able to have an hour and a half of really authentic conversation, which I think makes a difference. So thank you very much for your willingness to, to do that. Unless there's anything else, I'm adjourning the meeting. So thank you, everyone. Thank you. Stacy.